All right. Good evening, welcome to the regular Board of Education meeting for the month of June. With the Board of Education, Joy, would you call the role?
Mr. Wickliff?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Felter? Leeta, you're on mute.
Here, sorry.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
All right. Um, just off the top, wanted to, and many of you will have seen this social media or on the website, but the district has put out a statement with everything that's going on right now. And for those that haven't heard, I wanted to just take a moment and read that statement that I am certainly in support of and then give other board members an opportunity if if there's something that you want to say. But the statement from the district, as a public school district within a beautifully diverse community, we are processing recent events with heavy hurts. Collectively, our emotions have been on a roller coaster in recent days. Our priority is the safety, the well-being, and the equitable opportunities for our students, our staff, and our families. It is our duty to provide a safe, caring environment for learning, and when our community hurts, we need to address the pain. As educators, as administrators, and as humans, we will continue to listen and to support. Right now, and more than ever, our students and our families are watching and learning. Racism and divisiveness have no room in our buildings, in our community, in our state, nation, or in our world. It will not be tolerated. Students and our families of color need to know they are welcome, and their voice matters, their lives matter. As humans, we are created equal and deserve the same opportunities. Our staff is committing committed to ensuring safety and disrupting racism in our halls. We are stronger as a community, as one. Let our anger, fear, sadness bind us together, for that will make times of joy even sweeter. We see you, we hear you, we love you. At first, I agree with with everything there, and I thought that that was well said. You know, I I candidly struggle a little bit what to say in a time like this, but what I would say is that I think that people all over the country in our community are having tough, needed conversations. And I think that that's good. We need to have those conversations and we need to have action that comes out of this conversation. As we talk about it from an educational standpoint, I feel firm, and I believe that we are committed, as we have been and will continue to be, to diversity and inclusion and culturally competent curriculum. And we're not perfect, but we will continue to strive to get better as we do in in all things. And so I just appreciate that statement and just wanted to say a few words. So I would open it up. If there are any other board members that feel like there's something that you want to say before we get going into the of the of the meeting, I would give you the floor.
Yeah, Shannon, I would echo your those sentiments that you shared, and I would also just like to challenge us, as you said, to do better and to be better. I think it's important for us to, as we tell the community that we see them and that we hear them, that we try to create space for them to be seen and for them to be heard. I would challenge us to, in this time, I'm thinking about, you know, our teachers, our students, our staff of color, I'm thinking about the how they are seeing the events that are unfolding, I mean, in our country. And I'm thinking through what lens will they see those events and the questions that our students are asking? I heard on social, I read on social media, students and kids asking their parents, making statements like, you know, I thought this was over, and I thought this was something of the past. And that, to me, says that we have to do a better job of educating our kids about the past and the recent history and the recent events that have unfolded, but also educating them so that they are better prepared to face the world that they would go into. So I would ask our district to to challenge us to demand more for us, from us, and to not let us forget this moment and allow this moment to pass, but to take actionable steps and to move this conversation forward.
Shannon, I'd like to say something. I saw a question posted recently on social media that asked, when did you have your first teacher of color? Specifically, the question asked, when did you have your first African American teacher? And I found myself, as a middle aged white woman who grew up in the Midwest, fortunate to say that my first black teacher was in first grade, and that I had teachers of color, and that's plural, teachers of color, at every stage from first grade through sixth grade, because I went to an elementary school and lived in a district that made that a priority. And I feel so fortunate to have had that experience, because I grew up with adults of color around me and as part of my community. And I can't imagine what it's like for children of color to grow up without those role models in the place that they spend the majority of their time. So if there's something that I think that we need to really be deliberate about as we move forward, as difficult as it is sometimes to try to change, we're going to have to be very deliberate about how we recruit and retain teachers of color and make the Alatha School District a place that they want to come, and I know that we can do that. Thank you.
I'll say a few words here real quick. I know, Mr. Wickliff, Mr. Boyd, I appreciate both your comments and appreciate your leadership in this, because you guys live it. And I mean, being the white parent of two African American kids, I don't live it directly, but I see the ways it can affect families and people in general. And so I you know, I appreciate you guys' leadership in a lot of what we're doing here. I think there's a lot of opportunities, as Mr. Boyd mentioned, that we can continue to get better. I have no doubt that our leadership will help us get better. I think we have people in in roles that that will help us get there, and this is something that's going to take the time as we listen to get better. But I do think that there's some a lot of listening we all need to continue to do, but really just to continue, and I've I've shared this with with others in the past, we just need to keep the dialogue going. So we'll as a district, I make a promise to our our students and staff, just similar to what the the statement went out and said, and that we're going to continue to to get to go through this in ways that are beneficial to to ways, but we're going to be listening a lot. And so I just want to make that that promise on our behalf and my behalf anyway. And we've always been leaders in the in in a lot of arenas in the district, from the Alatha District in the area, and I have no doubt we can do that going forward. So again, thanks again for the support statement that went out. I thought I thought it was it was well put for where we need to be today before we continue to listen. So.
All right, others seeing none?
I would like to point out, we will have our next board meeting, we'd originally planned for May, conversation around, really, our focus is part of the strategic plan around diversity and inclusion, and that included hiring and some of those aspects to not only make sure that the board was was aware of efforts that are underway, but also to to talk about, as Mr. Boyd said, challenging where where are we going to go and how is this going to look in in the future? So I felt it was an important enough conversation that we needed to do it in person versus Zoom. So we had scheduled that for July, and that way you'd also have an opportunity, since we're planning on that meeting being in person, to be able to meet Mr. Razzo and others that are working on on that on behalf of the school district. So that will be our presentation next month to begin to to talk about where we want to be as a district and what we're currently doing and and hope to do in the future. So that will be that will be our presentation in July.
Well, and John, I appreciate that. It speaks to so when we developed this this strategic plan and we came at it from a different angle, part of the the idea was that it would not just be this dead document that sits in a binder on your shelf and we don't take action on, that it would be something that we that everyone could understand, and that there would be actionable items on and in, you know, the the community really helped us develop that strategic plan as in terms of where we want to and need to be as a district and and the fact that that was one of the pieces that we heard from the from from the community, and now are putting those things in place to try to to address some of those needs, I think, I think speaks a lot to to the whole concept of that strategic plan to begin with. So I appreciate that.
If you if you look at the portrait of a graduate, if you look at our pillars, it is intertwined with each of those areas. So it is something that our community and you all as a as a board felt was important to make sure it became and continued to grow as part of our DNA as a school district. So lots of work to do. It isn't going to happen overnight, but I look forward to the opportunity as as we continue to work in those areas for further conversation.
That's great. If there are no other comments, I will I will move us along here. Continuous learning plan update.
All right, Dr. Jaeger is going to pull up a PowerPoint here.
And this is elliptical.
All right. What we wanted to do tonight was to walk through just a little bit of the the history over the last couple of months regarding the continuous learning plan 1.0, and then to be able to talk about continuous learning plan 2.0, should it be necessary moving forward, and why we don't have all the answers and things continue to develop and as they have throughout all of this change on almost daily basis, we did want to give you an update. So when you think about what happened with the continuous learning plan, and when we let school out a day early before spring break, no one anticipated we weren't coming back. We had a had a feeling after talking to Johnson County Health Department that our spring break might be extended. So when the governor, through her emergency action, canceled face to face school for the remainder of the year, gave us until March 30th, or 10 days in which to come up with that plan. We knew we were going to have to look, and we've been through this, so I won't reiterate a great deal, the online learning and our packet learning. We knew that there were certain guidelines that the state and KSDE had given us, and the Alatha Plan met or exceeded those guidelines in in a number of different ways. It was never intended to replace what would happen in school, or to look like a six hour school day sitting in front of a computer, and that was that was never the direction provided by KSDE. So if you look at the direction they provided, they gave minutes per day that by grade level that they felt districts needed to try to engage students. And we met and exceeded those those minutes. Some of the challenges, as you'll recall, we had 10 days in which to plan. We knew we had internet access and device access issues, not only for our students, but our teachers. If you remember the last board meeting, you all passed some technology purchases that we accelerated almost a year. So our middle school teachers, for example, had iPads. Their computers were desktop units. So when they left school, that meant that their access and their ability to work unless they owned something at home was strictly through the iPad. With the number of students we had with packets, we know we're somewhere between 5 and 10% at least of our students that didn't have access to devices or internet. We needed to be able to think about training. How much training can we do? What can we do for our our teachers? We also knew that we wanted, and it would be a need for consistency, so that our parents and our students could consistently go to one location, have one format that they could follow, so that it wasn't a constant change varied on teacher to teacher. We we set the expectations for our staff, those who were engaged in developing the continuous learning plan for those that needed to check in on their students, whether it was by phone or Zoom or or other areas. And we also, during that time period, worked to coordinate with other area school districts, because a lot of us, we knew there there would be comparisons. And I do think there were there were some misconceptions and based on email and those types of things under the continuous learning plan when we think about this, that teachers weren't teaching, they weren't engaging with students. Other districts were doing something more extensive. None of these are accurate, as we know. Alatha was the only district that wasn't grading student work and being turned in on a daily basis. We know that with our coordination work with other area school districts, that each of us chose a little different avenue based on on what we had in place. We chose YouTube because we knew it could also be accessible through smartphones, so that would expand opportunities. But that was, as you all know, that that was the scenario that we needed to deal with and develop a CLP. So that's a little bit of the recap, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jaeger at this point.
So I want to talk just a little bit about some of the successes with CLP 1.0. One of the things I would say is we've received, or we received tremendous feedback from both our parents, our staff, our students, and we know that everything wasn't a success, but we do want to take a little bit of time to highlight the exceptional things that happened, just because it was such a task and really a great showing of the the tremendous work that our staff can do here in Alatha. So just a few things that I'll highlight. Within the first two weeks, we had over 1,000 educators that got together to develop the content initially for our continuous learning website. And again, those were educators that 10 days before that had no idea that they would be rethinking education in that sort of period of time and have it available for our students and families that quickly. As Mr. Allison said, we asked our educators to be in touch with students. Certainly, by nature, we had a lot of students who were in touch with their teachers, because they wanted feedback, they wanted guidance. But as you know, we had some students who wanted to just kind of hang out, not participate. And so our teachers did a really great job of following up with individual students who were not responsive, who were not asking feedback to continuous learning. And as Mr. Allison said, they tried to do that through a variety of means and ways to get in touch with students and their families. One of the things that was very similar for Alatha is other Johnson County school districts is what we did with our high school students. Obviously, everything we do in education is important at all levels, but high school is pretty important in terms of as students be able to go on to post secondary opportunities, earn scholarships, those sorts of things. But our high school counselors, teachers, principals, they did a tremendous job of working individually with students who either needed to earn their or to increase their grades, to get a passing grade, so they get credit for that, and especially those students who were at risk for not graduating. So those efforts were made through learning contracts. Many of our high school teachers had 40 to 50 individual students that they were working with during this last fourth quarter to help them get where they needed to be. So a tremendous effort by those staff members. Obviously, academics is important, but as you all know, the social emotional piece is also important. That was really a concerted effort on our continuous learning platform or website was to have those social emotional supports available to our students and our families. I think you also know that during this time, we provided teletherapy to students and a lot of interactions, and because we know that many of our students were dealing with and are dealing with things that are unexpected in their households and their families and that kind of thing. Certainly, a continued focus on standards, that shouldn't be surprising, as that's one of our big three. But you know, one of the things that we know is that we have to be pretty clear about it, what it is we want our students to learn, and our staff that worked on this did a tremendous job on that. Early on, Mr. Allison talked a couple of months ago to board meeting about pivoting. I will say that over the last number of weeks, this has become our catchphrase in learning services, that we have to be ready to pivot at a moment's notice. And that really is a really important thing that that we had to be open to, because we received continual feedback about certain areas that needed to be bolstered, providing different kinds of opportunities for our students and families. And so we had to be ready to make some changes based on that feedback and helping the teachers who are doing this work make those changes as well. And I would just say that it was absolutely amazing how quickly everyone responded to to those pivots along the way. One of the really cool things, and I forgot this bullet a second ago, but one of the really cool things that happened was we had collaboration across this entire system. You know, we focus a lot on collaboration within a school to support students, but this really gave us the opportunity for our fourth graders across the entire system to work together, for Algebra I teachers across the system to work together. And so we had new friendships, new professional networks, and new colleague resilience really built by this process and teachers working with other staff members who they never had worked with before. When this all kind of wound down a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, whatever it was now, there were parties on Zoom where teachers just the teachers that had worked together wanted to get together one last time and say, have a great summer and and that kind of thing. So it was really cool that that took place. And as you know, one of the things that was really important for us as well was the opportunity to provide equitable experiences for our students. And when I share some numbers in a second, hopefully it'll elicit or show that we did that in many different ways. So just some numbers to share with you. On our continuous learning website that we had, we had over 1.2 million views on that website, which was certainly represented far more than our student and parent population here in Alatha. We had just over 100,000 unique IP address views. We had people view our continuous learning website in all 50 states in the United States. Forty seven countries participated in looking at our content that we had available. Interesting to note, the second most viewed country was Mexico, and then after that, it was Finland, which is pretty exciting to see, because they're the ones often touted as the very best educators in the entire world, and they were checking out the continuous learning website in Alatha, which is really neat. The other thing that I would say is we had other school districts share or borrow our content, if you will. There were some school districts where you would go and click on third grade and up would pop an Alatha teacher on YouTube to teach kids in Iowa the third grade content. So it was a great sharing thing around that way as well. We distributed 36,500 learning packets during this process over this eight week period of time. I will tell you that, you know, when we first hear packet learning, sometimes what we think of is just printing packets of worksheets. But I will tell you, that's not what we did in Alatha. The teams of teachers and educators that worked to develop the content for each grade level and in subject area, they also developed the learning packets at the same time. So students that participated in packet learning did not get just busy work, for say, they really got a representation of the continuous learning that our other students in our system were working on. So lots of packets and lots of work with distribution and that kind of thing. But I'm really, really pleased with that. And the last thing says educators involved. So this isn't obviously the total numbers of educators that were involved, but this is our educators that were involved in designing the continuous learning, learning opportunities, also our special educators who are providing learning opportunities for students directly. And that was almost 1,300 of our certified or licensed staff that were involved in that process. As Mr. Allison said, none of our staff members were not involved at all. They were all working with individual students and families and following up and that kind of thing as well. It would be hard to talk about the continuous learning 1.0 and also not mention special services. And one of the things that you probably know is that our requirements with special education did not change as we started working with continuous learning. And so our system and systems around the country had to respond very quickly to determine how it was that students were going to get the special education services that they were entitled to, but also how were we going to continue the business of special education? And what I mean by that is students' individual education plans, how are you going to continue to meet to do those? And then also our students who are in evaluation for an IEP, what were we going to do to get that done? And I'm so proud of the work that our special education department did with the tremendous work of our special educators in our system, that we completed 1,200 IEPs virtually in the last number of weeks during continuous learning. And so those families and those students still had individual conversations about their learning needs and set goals for next year. 371 of those were initial evaluations. Initial evaluations take a lot longer than the annual IEPs, where that really is the opportunity where students have many times a battery of testing that they go through in order to be identified or not for special education, and also lots and lots of research and work by the teams that are doing that. And so lots of lots of work for those evaluations, those initial evaluations, and then 829 of those with annual IEPs as well. It's pretty interesting to think about, as you know, those are all legal binding documents, so there's signatures all over them. And so our folks did an amazing job of even obtaining the signatures that they needed to make sure that the documents were ready to go and and those pieces. And then, of course, all those meetings were held virtually with full teams. That means that there was a special educator present, a general education educator present, a principal or a designated president, and obviously student teams and those sorts of folks as well. So really a tremendous effort by lots of people to get that done. I'm really proud of the work they've done. Mr. Allison, you want to talk about this one briefly? Is transition?
Yes, as we think about continuous learning plan 2.0, we know it's not going to be like what what we've just gone through this spring. The the tough part is we're not exactly sure what parameters will be around us, where we're going to be when we hit August. Our hope would be we would be back in school in a more normal, traditional format. Based on communication, we've had some parents, there are of course some parents that are concerned about their children coming back because of medical conditions or or other reasons. So in in some capacity, we anticipate that there will be a virtual learning component, and it may be for some of our students. We may be forced to use it for all of our students again, and and that's the one of those difficult components to this is how do we design something that that may be used by all of our students for a short period of time, some of our students for a longer period of time, and how all does how does that all come together? So that's going to be part of the challenge that our Learning Services Department is is working on over the summer. The Kansas Department of Education has put together a task force as as they did with CLP 1 to provide guidance for us. That work is underway. It's got a number of educators. Dr. Jaeger is one of those that's that's working with the the state group. We have some other of our staff that are a part of that effort, and they hope by sometime early July to be able to give that guidance to school districts to to help us as as we move forward. So we we know what we had to do and were able to do for the the last bit of school this past school year, but if something like that would have to occur again, we know it's got to it's got to look different, it's got to be more robust, and that we've we've got a little more time to be able to plan and and put some of those elements in place to be able to do that. So I'll let Dr. Jaeger talk about the work that's going on as we think about CLP 2.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, as as Mr. Allison mentioned, this is an ever changing dynamic situation. We do have several teachers from our district and others who are represented on the State Committee, which is really good, because it will help us at least have a sense of where the state's going even before we get the document. But we are doing some things and started doing some things several weeks ago to prepare as a system for CLP 2.0, if you will. One of the things that we did a number of weeks ago is we provided a staff survey. It's really important to us that we have the voice of our teachers and our educators and what we do moving forward. You know, certainly, we're going to have You know, certainly, we're going to have to, as a system, put some structures in place. So we have a predictable response for our parents and our students and our community. But it's really important to us that our teachers still have the ability to provide the art and science of teaching and connect with students individually. And so it was really important for us to get their input and and their thoughts. Even about things like grading and assessment and platforms that we should be using and the creation of lessons, those kinds of things. Because again, we have to be ready to support the system in doing that. As you probably know, in our Thought Exchange recent survey, we have had over 6,000 parents interact with that and give us some input. The great news right now is that what our educators have told us and what our parents have told us is pretty consistent with with each other. And so not surprising, but that's one of the things that that has happened. As Mr. Allison said, it would look much different with CLP 2.0. It would look more, much more like live teaching, teachers interacting with students, delivering live content. What we do know is there's no way that students will be able to park themselves in front of a Zoom meeting for eight hours a day and and learn content that way. There's lots of research about how ineffective that is, especially in the last eight weeks. So we'll certainly, certainly relying on that. But we do know that that interactivity is really important with teaching and learning, and so that would be part of it. Accountability is a word that continues to come up that really supports a lot of these things. We know that students would need the ability to turn in assignments, teachers would need to be able to provide assignments and earn grades on those assignments. We also know that in order to deliver instruction, that we'd have to do some assessing of learning. So right now, you're familiar with Mastery Connect, the formative assessment system that we started using as a system last year. We're looking at how we can even utilize that if students aren't in school, if they're at home. So we can still assess where they their learning is based on our standards, so we can be prepared to meet their individual needs. And I talked about accountability, attendance obviously is an important one as well. Much of what we're able to do or what we're able to think about hopefully will be an information, as Mr. Allison shared, that we'll receive from the state of Kansas Department of Education middle of July. But we'll, we'll be ready to receive that and and help our, support our system that way. One of the things that we know is going to be really important also is consistency from teacher to teacher or subject to subject. That doesn't mean that they're all teaching the exact same way and using the exact same resources every minute of the of the day or anything like that. But we know that for our students to, if they're in a virtual or blended environment, to be interacting with our staff members for their learning, they can't be working in 12 different platforms. So one of the things that we've talked about and sent some information to staff actually as recently as yesterday is we're going to be using one platform as a system to interact with our students and our families. Because they have to have the consistency, the predictability, where they go to get information, not only about learning, but grades, attendance, all those kinds of things. So that will be important to us as part of 2.0 as well. And then thanks to our Board of Education, also, a one-to-one environment will be something that we're excited about. You know, if this would happen at some point in the fall. The other thing that I would mention about that, internet access continues to be a concern, even if we put a device in all students' hands. So right now, I know technology is working really hard on trying to determine some solutions for that. But additionally, we're also working with our vendors that we use in learning services related to text and course materials to see what are those things that we could load on a student device so they're able to interact with content at home and those kinds of things as well. So those are some of the things that are happening there. I just want to give you a brief timeline. As I mentioned before, the interaction and the feedback from our teachers and the folks in the classrooms working with our students every day is really critical to any success we have as a system with this. And so to get kind of CLP 2.0 started, you'll see that we started that on about April 30th. Andrea Palakovich is the director that works in learning services. She had a great meeting with our OEA executive board. That board's a really important group of folks because it's representative of almost every subject, content area and level in our system. And so worked with them to develop the staff survey that I talked about the next chunk of time. We had grade level teams from across the system in different levels analyzing the information that came in on that survey. And then May 15th, so just a couple of weeks ago, they started a draft of our CLP 2.0 plan or handbook for Olathe. Certainly, we're appreciative of the state's efforts and look forward to receiving that information on July 10th. But to get this thing ready for, you know, more than 30,000 students in the middle of August, we knew we needed to get started before we got information from the state. So that that's happening as well. And then committee work, again, working on that information. So just last week, the committees turned in draft content for their handbook. And really what that is, is it's best practice around grading, instruction, things that we need to be thinking about again to provide that consistent experience for our students and families. And then from June 1st to the 26th, there's been a concerted effort in learning services to develop the training plan for Continuous Learning 2.0. And part of that training plan is not just the handbook, but it's also instructional videos that will be available in in July that will show our teachers how to use different resources, should they not know how to use them, just if they want to start getting their feet wet for this blended environment. Of course, on July 10th, we'll wait for the information from the Kansas State Department of Education. And at that time, we'll take the handbook that we've developed and crosswalk it, if you will, with what the state of Kansas has developed and hit a good spot for Olathe. Again, our hope is that we'll have some clarity about what kinds of minutes are suggested in a blended learning environment. If we would need to use some sort of different school schedule, what that could look like, those kinds of things, we're hoping to get from them as well. And then about July 20th, our hope is that we're able to share a handbook that we've developed with our staff. Certainly, the expectation is not that everybody has to work over the summer and memorizing that. But we have lots of staff members who are very eager eager and want to get going. And so we'll have resources available for them starting about July 20th, where they can just go in and start learning and and filling their cup that well, that way and preparing for next school year. And then right now, as we look at professional development next year, we're really planning on our district level professional development to be around this blended learning model. So not only how do we support students in a one-to-one environment, should they not ever go home, should they be in school for the year? But also, how do we do that should they go home? So our focus really will be, how do we, how do we harness the power of technology in working with our students? And also a consistent system to interact with our students, to provide assignments, feedback, grading, all those kinds of things. So our our district PD will be about a day and a half of that. There will probably be a decent amount of that that is teaching, if you will, about best practice around blended learning. But also, our hope and intent at this point is to also provide a great deal of time for our staff to just get in and practice, set things up that they'll need for the year and just be end users, if you will, to get that part going. So that's kind of the skeleton, if you will, of a timeline that we're using right now to be ready for when school launches in the fall.
One of the things we'll be doing later this month, probably within the next 10 days, is another parent survey, potentially with a few different scenarios to to gauge where our parents feel is, would be the best place for their students potentially in the fall, based on that. To give us an idea of what, when we talk about CLP II, and if that that is a a parallel opportunity compared to being in school as in a more traditional format, how many, how many students are we talking? Because we're, we're going to have to look at staffing and and how all those pieces fit together. So a lot of information for us to try to gather really in the next couple of weeks to to be able to, again, to have enough of a plan as well as feedback from the state that we can communicate more details, both to our staff and to our community.
And one of the things I didn't mention is we'll be working in the month of June and early July to also train lots of our staff members. So right now, we're looking for staff members from each of our schools to participate in kind of a train to train the, train the trainer model. And also, most of our certified staff in learning services will get training over the summer as well. And our intent really is that, you know, should we need to do something virtually or some sort of blended approach in the fall that will have lots of people ready to support our system moving forward, which was a luxury we didn't have last time in terms of having an army of folks ready to go to support this work.
Dr. Jaeger, thank you for your work on this.
Absolutely.
At the 1,200 IEPs that have been conducted so far, wow, that's a huge undertaking. Do you know what percentage of our special ed services that represents? Do, how many do we have undone or that still need to be handled?
Jeanette, do you want to pop on and answer that?
Certainly. Hi there, we serve around 5,900 students with IEPs. So annually, we at least conduct around 6,000 meetings a year. These just happen to be the meetings that were falling between March and May. So the 1,200 is representative of of what would have been conducted even if we were in session face to face. So the remainder of those were done between August and March.
Wow, so we're up to, up to date then?
Yes, we are, absolutely.
Thank you, and congratulations, that's no small feat that you've accomplished, thank you.
What a great tribute to the team that we have in Olathe.
Absolutely, I had a question, we heard a lot about consistency, platforms, even as we shifted in thinking about technology and how, you know, middle school teachers had desktops, and that's just not going to work. I, my sense has always been that we have gathered input from end users as we make some of these decisions. Were we able to, in those staff surveys, kind of gain some, some insight or some, some direction, some preference as to, as we talk about what technology do you need, what platforms do you need, was there a mechanism for that?
Yeah, so, so, Mr. Allison, do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. One of the things that we talk a lot about in education is learning management systems. Most industries have something like that that they have. For for education, it really is a kind of a total storehouse, if you will, for all the interaction with students, staff and parents. And we've not had a unified one in Olathe. We've had several different options that our staff has utilized and has done a tremendous job with it. One of the things that we asked in the survey that went out was we actually asked by name for a couple of those learning systems. Is there any of these that would best support your needs that you feel like would be helpful for us to know? It probably won't surprise you that with the number of staff members we have, that there wasn't uniform consistency with that. But what we learned a lot was people really wanted the ability to use parts of Microsoft, they wanted to be able to use parts of Google. They wanted to be able to do some of the things that they were comfortable with. So we went to work with technology on finding a solution that would still allow our staff some flexibility. But to the end user being the student and the parent, that they would all go to a similar place to get those, those pieces of information. So, you know, I I don't know that it will be painless, if you will, because it's the first time as a system where we're going to say, everybody needs to use the platform for interactivity with students and parents. But I will tell you that the the feedback that we got from our staff on that survey was extremely helpful because it helped us figure out what are the pieces that we need to be able to do that a system has to be able to support. And we landed actually on a system that's based with the grade book and parent and student information system we've been using for years in Olathe. It will be an upgraded model that we'll have starting late July, early August. So there will be a lot of familiarity across our system with our staff, our students and our parents as well.
One of the, the other things I'd like to point out, we talked about our, our parents and our staff surveys. But we've, we've also spent quite a bit of time looking at some of the research that's been out there across the country. EAB, which is the the Research Clearinghouse that we participate with. Dr. Jaeger and Learning Services, as well as the leadership team, spent a number of hours with them as they've looked and pulled together research and and experiences that school districts had all over the country. And what we're looking at for the CLP II is very much aligned, which we were glad to hear from what they were pulled together and said, these are the elements of the systems that were more successful, where parents and students were able to stay more engaged, that teachers were felt better about what they were able to present their students, that they didn't feel like they had to come up with all the the answers or the technology and those types of things. So we, we've also compared this to aspects across the country. And one of those that was an absolute in every piece of research we've looked at is that common platform. That when, when students and parents did not have a common platform, there were two absolutes actually. That was, that was a a major issue. And that families disengaged from the virtual learning opportunity, much of it because they were overwhelmed, they were confused, they were getting, you know, you need to go here for this or or there for that based on on the teacher. So it was, it was clear that we needed a common platform, which we also knew we needed to think about the the training. If you're bringing something new in at the same time. The second was the expectation that's, that some families had that their student would sit in front of a computer and it would just be a teacher teaching like they were going through their normal day for five and six hours a day. Absolutely failed in almost every situation it was tried. You couldn't keep students engaged. As adults, I know with Zoom meeting, when you spend half the day on Zoom, you, you, you can't stay engaged. So that'll also be part of the plan, as we know there will be direct instruction. But it's, it's not going to be minute for minute comparison to what would, what would occur in the classroom because we know it's not effective and that our students will disengage and and we won't get the the learning outcomes that we want. So as we continue to work through this, we will continue to look at the best research that we can to make sure we're, we're aligning and and putting the best system we can together.
Well, I, I appreciate that and appreciate all the work that has been put in and the fact that we are getting the the feedback. We are all learning to do our jobs in a different way. Whether it directly impacts like the way that we do our work personally or the end user who's, who we're interacting with, they, they might be experiencing it differently. And so I, I, I'm glad that we are out there sort of benchmarking and figuring out, okay, we did it this way. What are best practices, what did we learn through this? Because, you know, I'd love to say that we won't have to do it again, but at least we'll be prepared in this sense. And I think that common platforms make, any of us who have worked in corporate America have gone through those conversions and can understand what a pain it can be when you've got multiple platforms that your customers are having to interact with and how one of the number one things that they'll tell you is we want single sign-on and we want to be able to do everything from one, from one place. And so because the education system isn't the only system that they have to interact with, right? So, so that makes a lot of sense to me, thank you. Other questions?
I had a question real quick. And again, great work by a lot of people involved in this. I I just wanted to, to ask Dr. Jaeger, so we had about 1,300 or just shy of that educators involved in the process of creating this, is that right? And how many approximate educators do we have in the district?
Jill could connect, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our certified educators is about 2,700, is that correct?
Correct.
So that engagement level going forward, I mean, I know we're starting like, you mentioned June 29th as as some pieces of at least ability to do some things on YouTube, start looking at things. Is there some expectations that are being put out towards our educators? I mean, 1,200 is a lot of people, that's 1,500 others that that aren't doing anything right, are not, they're doing things. But how are we keeping them engaged and outside of just, you know, surveys? Are there check-in kind of teams and things that, that will be used and that type of thing?
So really, that was kind of C, CLP 1.0. In terms of that work, but again, those educators were interact, the ones that weren't directly involved in creating CLP lessons were working, especially like at the high school level on individual contracts with students. We asked all teachers at the other levels as well to be in touch with students. So all of our staff members were engaged in that process to some degree. You know, moving forward, our role really in learning services for CLP 2.0 You know, moving forward, our role really in learning services for C L P two point oh is to set a structure in place that the system will be able to use. Then, once that structure is in place and we've helped everybody understand what that looks like, then the necessary professional development, it really will then in many ways become the job of the individual educators in our system and the buildings to make sure that the courses and the grade levels, what have you, are taught by those folks. And so I would say that you know, the consistent high level of involvement from all of our staff will be very different than what we experienced in C C L P one point oh. Because it will look more like providing traditional education in some degrees, assessing students, providing individual lessons, needs, things like that. So I think it will look very, I know it'll look very different than than what we did in in terms of moving forward. Did I answer your question? All right.
Thank you. Others? All right. Great job. Again, team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Section three, the consent agenda. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to take a look at those items, submit questions. If there are no questions or anything to be pulled up for further discussion, I would seek a motion.
I want to pull one real quickly and if I could ask Dr. Jaeger to come back and just item three point two four. The Nearpod Interactive Professional Development and Lesson Software. Just to take a moment, especially because I think it ties right into the discussion we just wrapped up. To talk about what Nearpod is, I noticed that they gave us a very nice discount moving forward because we ended so quickly last year. And diving a little bit more deeply in how Nearpod may help us with our pivot moving forward this year since we don't know exactly what's coming.
You bet. So one of the things, you know, in a system like ours that we know that we need to always have is is a place we can send teachers and staff for resources quickly. Nearpod is really one of those for us. There are, I think I read, seven thousand lessons prepared and ready to go on Nearpod. And those are all vetted. They're all lined up, if you will, with best practice and research around education. And while you know, our teachers use them in different ways, that that's really powerful for us to have that as a resource. You know, I just pulled some numbers today. This year alone, and we've had Nearpod for a number of years in our system, we've had almost seven hundred and thirty thousand student interactions with Nearpod over the course of this year. A little bit lower in the last couple of months, but prior to that, you know, a lot of use by our students and our staff. One of the things that is really important about Nearpod and a lot of the emerging curriculum resources we see is they're not static, they're dynamic. And you know, when most of us were in school, there was a time where we buy a traditional textbook and that would be the one that we would have for the next seven years. And obviously, it was hard for us to put current events and and most recent issues in those textbooks. And so one of the things that's really a plus for us for things like Nearpod is it's dynamic. And so you know, as the school year starts next year, there will be Nearpod lessons based on what's happening in our country right now. You know, there will be lessons about what's going on as a result of George Floyd's death. There will be information about COVID. There will be live lessons ready to go for our staff that are about today's issues. And so that's one of the things that's really powerful about Nearpod for us. Something else that's very beneficial for us is many times because textbooks and resources are primarily written for California and Texas, sometimes they're missing the global perspective. And so one of the things that Nearpod does a great job of doing is providing a global perspective for us and our students. And certainly that helps us as we try to educate all kids and help, you know, with our with our strategic planning and social and cross cause cross-cultural skills. And there's lessons about empathy. There's lessons about untold historical narratives. So really, an opportunity to 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 reach in and get information and share lessons with our students about things that our textbooks don't necessarily always represent. So it's really powerful for us in that area. The other thing that it does is it has a strong bank of social emotional learning lessons that again are 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 not static. They're up to date and you know, there there will be real things related to what's happening in the world for us as an available resource. The other thing I would mention about Nearpod is it's a wealth of information about professional learning. We've worked with Nearpod over the last couple of years as we've had our focus on the big three. And they've built almost like Netflix lanes for us within Nearpod where our staff can go in and say, I'd like more information about P L C. And they click and there's lots of different P D opportunities about P L C. And so they're really a great partner from not only a curricular standpoint for us and our our students, but also in terms of professional development.
Super. Thank you.
You bet.
Others?
I would love to hear more about three point oh seven, the social emotional learning resource, the assessment resource.
Dr. Dane, do you want to take that one or Angie Salva? All right. Oh, there she is. She must not be.
Okay.
Panorama.
Yeah, the renewal of the panorama. Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, great. Thank you. That is the resource that we have used as our S E L assessment. As that we give out to our children in grades three through twelve. We give two times a year. And then we give to some students three times a year. Along with that, we send that information out to parents. And then teachers, when they receive that, there is a playbook that they can use then for their S E L lessons in their counseling groups as they look at supporting students. So that is just a renewal for us.
So is that the assessment tool that we used to identify suicidal ideation?
No, that is something different. So that is the signs of suicide that we use only at the high school. And panorama is actually grades three through twelve. And that is actually part of what we need to have in place with K S D E for the accreditation.
Awesome. Thanks for the clarification.
You bet. Sorry about the delay on that. I didn't know.
You're good. We're all zooming around. Let me ask one more question. The college and career readiness resource. Can you just give a little spiel about that? Whomever wants.
That's Zello. It's our secondary college and career readiness resource. And part of, again, the state's accreditation is college and career readiness. And it's a standard that requires all schools to help students prepare an individual plan of study. And that's what this resource helps us do is to be able to. And we've been using their their first, I guess, two years ago, we it was Career Cruising. This is now a much more robust platform that we used last year in the nineteen twenty school year. So it it helps our students look at some of the information and in career, college readiness information. And then also provides the avenue for us and our counselors to help students develop their individual education plan.
Thank you.
Others?
I'd move to approve Action Consent Agenda Items three dot zero one through three dot two six as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Geary, a second by Mrs. Spelter.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Spelter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes. All right. Moving on, actions, bids, contracts and agreements. I just kind of wanted to set the stage for just a second. So four dot zero one, I'm going to step away for as it involves kids T L C. We've got quite a few items here. So if it's okay with everybody, as we typically do, we'll go through and anything we want to pull off for further discussion or comments. I know there's there's several on here that that we'll do that for. We'll go ahead and do that and then just vote on them in a block in the interest of time, assuming that there is nothing controversial that comes up. I did want to make a note about four dot one four, the negotiated agreement. You know, traditionally, we would go to executive during to an executive session to discuss the agreement. It's here in action items this year because for those that will all remember, we passed a two-year came through a two-year agreement with teachers with the teachers in this year. So by and large, we had agreed to all of these things last year when we ratified. And so now we just need to go forward with with this year with you know, minor language changes. So that's why this is here as opposed to as it traditionally would be being in an executive session where we'd have an opportunity to discuss and then come back and and vote. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Beveridge.
All right. So we're just going to do four point zero one right now. Does anyone have any questions regarding that item? And if not, I take a motion.
I move to approve action item four dot zero one. Salary reimbursement agreement with kids T L C and I'd like to publish schools for a term of one year as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. Gary, maybe? I heard a few.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Spelter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right. And I assume Shannon's going to come. There he is. Okay.
All right. Thank you. I guess we'll go down through these and let's just pull up whatever questions anyone has. I've got a couple, but I'll leave it to you guys first and we'll see if we get them all covered.
Okay. Can I ask a question on this? Maybe maybe more in the weeds than we even know, but for four dot zero nine on the purchase of the P P. And I understand we're going to this is still kind of a moving target, but have we one, have we reached out to staff? And I mean, do we have a pretty good feel of is it going to be requirement? Is it going to be things that are going to be personal preferences? Are we going to allow things coming from home? I mean, more, this may be more than it's really right here, but policy wise, but since it's there, I was just going to see if we had some idea on 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 some of that and if that dollar number, you know, just a lot around that. I don't know if Mr. Allison, you can.
Yeah, the 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 simple answer is no, we really don't. As you can hear about the conversation around masks, those types of things, we know that we're going to need some basic P P. We need to replace what we had in nurse's office. Some potential barriers at reception desks. Hand sanitizer, all those types of things. So this will be, this will get us a start and also provides the latitude that when we get more guidance or requirements, then we'll be we'll be able to move forward and and purchase those items. You know, in in March, it's almost impossible to get them. We're now starting to see some availability of of masks and and other equipment. So to to the gist of your question, we we don't know what's going to be required yet or what guidance will be given around what latitude we can we can have in some of those areas. So I I know this is this will be a topic that we'll come back to talk about. You know, at this month or at next month's meeting, potentially at our at our end of year special meeting, there may be some of these items that we're going to need to put on the agenda to discuss at that meeting. Just because of timing and hopefully we'll have have better instructions. With June fifteen, the at Asper Kansas Plan, which the Health Department has recommended, we follow. At that point in time, we're at the phase out. The because it got accelerated, which means there are no social distance guidance requirements, those types of things. So it it seems to change fairly rapidly and we'll continue to monitor that. And with a little more time, we'll have a better answer for you on on some of the other elements of your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Allison, I was going to ask this later, but it's kind of related. One of the common topics when I receive emails from parents is regarding the practicality of the C D C guidelines. And I know the answer to this question because we talked about it, but I thought it's worth getting out there in public. Is that those guidelines were not necessarily meant for the fall. Is that correct?
Yes, my understanding is is part of those guidelines and their development, particularly on the East Coast, you have schools that go into mid-June. So as they were looking at the potential of returning, those were really more directed for return to school now versus potentially in the fall. There's been no clear confirmation, but in talking to both the the state and county health departments, they believe there will be some some new guidance that the C D C they're hoping in the next couple of weeks would come out with recommendations. With the current situation in Kansas, been left up to counties. So it would be Dr. LaMester in the Johnson County Health Department that may become the kind of the the final arbitrators for us and giving us guidance and requirements that we'd need to meet as as school starts next year. So, yeah, you see the C D C. Again, we think we'll we'll see some different guidance potentially coming from them. But at the same time, we're having to monitor county, state to to make some of our determinations.
Thanks.
Second with four dot zero nine as relates to the budget source. Is there any level of confidence that the CARES Act will take care of this?
Absolutely. We have substantially larger amount that is coming our way through that. A variety of things can be it can be utilized to assist with all the extra costs we had in the last eight weeks and a variety of other matters. So there's ten times this amount coming. So I have no problem saying that we'll charge it against there.
Thanks.
Good question. Others?
Can we talk a little bit about four point thirteen, the Olathe Parks and Rec Elementary School Tennis Court Removal Project?
I could give you a brief summary and then Mr. Plangi, he can jump in if he'd like. Essentially, we have had tennis courts in agreement with the city in which we each would pay. They're on our property, technically their courts. We split the maintenance of them. And the city basically determined that they had enough tennis courts, I guess, in their inventory and that they no longer wanted to participate in maintaining them. We too have a variety of other courts. So our agreement is we had to share also in the cost of removing those those courts. So that's kind of the overview. Travis, if you want to add anything about kind of how this came to be. Yes, the the Parks and Rec managed the these courts. And at the time, they were starting to approach us about maintenance needs that they had for for the various courts. And at that time, when we were having the dialogue, the discussion was overtaking them them out. So the Parks and Rec made that decision and then kind of worked. So the Parks and Rec made that decision and then kind of worked with us on a schedule on being able to take those out. And that kind of came to a head a little bit when the shutdown happened and they were able to get their contractor onto the properties to remove those here at the beginning of the shutdown.
So did it, it moved it up potentially?
It did. Yeah, I was originally planning on starting probably closer to, to the summertime where it was less intrusive.
I think it took many community members by surprise. And so I, I mean, I feel like the city and our district does a really good job with communicating. And I feel like perhaps maybe it was just a perfect storm with the pandemic hitting. But I feel like many of our community members don't feel like they had any impact on it. So I just figured we might as well discuss it.
Yeah, the, Alatha Park and Recs, their determination is we looked at the replacement costs that, that they did not want to spend that. So that gave us the alternative to maintain the courts and replace them ourselves. They're not part of our elementary curriculum. So that type of expenditure to, to provide recreation resources for the community, when Park and Recs felt like they, they had enough courts, we had added courts across the district at some of our facilities. Is where, is where that decision really came to, came to a head and at their, at their decision that they did not want to continue funding those courts. Removal of the court seemed to be the most logical way to go.
If a citizen wanted to know where they could get a comprehensive list of where the courts are and what their options are, since these three were removed, where would they find that? Anybody know?
Outside of our facilities, I would assume the Park and Recs department, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think Two Trails and, and Mill Creek are the two courts that our city wants here still. I mean, my great tennis game practicing.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for that. Other questions in this section? I see 4.05 trade bid for a canopy over the Alathus fire truck. I am going to make an assumption, correct me if I'm wrong, that this is simply protecting the, that lovely piece of equipment that we were fortunate enough to get our hands on for the students in the public safety program? Others? All right. Seeing none, I would seek a motion to approve items dot 4.02 through 4.14.
I move to approve action items, bids, contracts and agreements 4.02 through 4.14 as presented.
Second.
Right. I have a motion by Ms. Schultz, a second by Mr. McCune.
Mr. McCune? Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Spelter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
All right. Here we go. KSB. Looks like we've got the governmental relations network representative as well as a legislative committee representative for, for that body that we need to have somebody on. Do we have anyone who's particularly interested in either of those positions?
I will be interested in the legislative committee for 2020, 2023.
Okay.
And I'm happy to stay on for governmental relations.
You guys making it easy tonight. I like that. Thank you, both of you.
I move to cease nominations.
Got a motion to cease nominations by Mr. Gary and a second by Mr. McCune.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Spelter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
And I need a motion for the second one there. I would move to appoint Leta Felter to serve as the 21 KSB Government Relations Network Representative and to appoint Brad Boyd to serve as the KSB Legislative Representative for year 2023.
All right. I've got a motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Gary.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Spelter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
All right. I think that's the first time we've done that correctly without Julie having to correct us. So.
Yes. And without having to ask the question, I feel like, I, I really feel like Mr. Gary was on top of this, just like, boom, I have to cease nominations.
Sorry if others were getting ready.
No.
I know Mr. McCune is at the International Space Station, so I didn't want to delay him any.
I appreciate it. You all can see the list of future action items. As always, we encourage you to, as you have questions, get those submitted so that we can get answers back out and discuss if, if necessary. I know I opened it up for discussion at the top, but that was pretty specific. So I'd ask if any board members have any comments, anything they'd like to discuss.
I, I, I had one and I don't know, I'm assuming at a future date, this may be celebrated or whatever. But I just wanted to take a second and thank Dr. Dane for all her work with the district. And I know that she's on our, our HR list here of, of people who look like June 8th is officially the last day, although I know she'll work for us forever in, in different ways. But you know, she's, she's a friend first for me. I've known her for, for many, many years. Had the opportunity to travel around the country with her and her great family. And we're so truly blessed as a district as well to have her lead us in some crazy times. Maybe they're all crazy, it seems like now, but truly some transitions that really had to be, had to be made. And, and a lot that weren't, weren't easy and a lot of changes. And I just want to say thanks. Great lady. We're, we're losing somebody. Sorry, special to us. And I know she'll be around and we'll see her, but Piper's getting a good one. So thank you. Dr. Dane.
Thank you for your kind words. I appreciate that. You know, I have lived in the district in Alatha for 22 years and raised our children here. And 23 years ago, we decided Alatha was where we wanted to live and where we wanted to raise our family. And so the opportunity to serve the district in the last five years and serve my own kids and kids that I love, like your children, has just been a pleasure. I'm Alatha's biggest fan and cheerleader and we still have two more years in the district as a parent. So please call on me whenever I can to volunteer. I, I appreciate your kind words. And I appreciate all the ice cream you've bought me over the years, Brian Gary, and so does Ashton Payne. So let me be sure I put that in there.
We love you.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. It's been a pleasure getting an opportunity to, to get to know you just a little bit and, and work with you. And they are certainly getting a good one. So don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Others?
So I was just going to mention next month, as you all know, we'll, we'll be voting for board president and vice president. And unless Shannon's changed his mind in the last 24 hours, we'll have a new president. And just wanted to throw it out there that I'd be honored to have your vote next month. And if you have any questions or comments or thoughts, I'm all ears.
Very good.
That's it.
What else?
I did want to acknowledge that June is Pride Month. So to all of our LGBTQ families, students and teachers, we see you and we acknowledge you and we recognize the Stoner Lights. So again, from my earlier comments, demand more from us. So we can be better for you.
Well said. Thank you. Others? All right. Now.
Sorry. Can I say one more? Okay.
You're done. Tony, can we meet him? Kenny, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, great job. I know a part of a, a presentation to the Kaufman Foundation early, last week that so many of our staff members were part of and, and, and the grant process. And hopefully we find out that things went well, but I just want to say thank you to that group of people that worked real hard to put together a very large amount of data to be presented in a very short amount of time that we were given to present. And, and I, I, I thought it went exceptionally well. And, and again, I think Dr. Dane was driving that a little bit, but kudos to all those people that were involved and helped remind us how great a district we truly are and show it off. So sorry, I'm done now, Shannon. That's, that's all I got. So hurry.
If you're sure, I, I don't want to rush you, Mr. Gary. That's important to be on time and, you know. But if you don't have anything more, I'd give the floor to Mr. Allison for any comments you may have.
Yes, my comments tonight really are a series of thank yous. So first, I'd like to thank professional counsel. As you know, we work year round as, as a team. It's a, it's a very unique collaboration for school districts between the district and, and ONEA and all the hard work that goes into making sure we have an agreement. And this year it was because we've, we've had a little consistency in finance. When we had the two-year agreement last year, we were able to, to get it done in a timely fashion and move forward. So a lot of hard work on a lot of folks' parts and I want to thank them for that. I want to, to also thank Dr. Dane. I've tried to talk her out of going to Piper, not, not necessarily Piper itself, but becoming a superintendent. But she, she insists she wants to, to give that a try. So they obviously realized that there was an opportunity there to get her sooner than later. She was supposed to be with us through the end of June. But I'm very happy that she's going to get an opportunity, particularly in these difficult times, to start her leadership in Piper next week. So Dr. Dane, thank you for, for all you've done. We, we will miss you. You've been a phenomenal advocate for students in this district and that there's, there's a legacy you're leaving. So again, we, we thank you very much. And lastly, I want to thank the, the board. You all have never shied away from, from taking a stance and being direct in what you want our, our district to be and to do and how we need to grow in representing this community. And that, that again is not typical of all school boards. So I want to thank you for your leadership and your passion as we continue to try to make sure that we're preparing students for their future. And that concludes my remarks tonight.
Thank you. My understanding is we do not need an executive session. And so with that, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.